Welcome to the Municipally Monroeville Planting Commission Meeting, November 17th, 2021. I really please rise as we pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence.
My pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. Chair and roll call, please.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Pecusa.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Kripke.
Here.
Ms. Montgomery. Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Weldon.
Here. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 20th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Paul?
Okay, our first two items under Old Business, I'll read them both into the record and then we can do...
Do them at the same time.
Yeah. So, the item number one, 21-5-St. Sri Shirdi Sai Baba Temple. Applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a new religious temple and then raise the existing temple and install associated site amenities. The project area is approximately one acre and located at 1451 Abers Creek Road, tax parcel 1108B173, in the R2-1 Family Residential and S Conservancy Zoning Districts. The second part of the project is a conditional use application, 21-3-C. Applicant is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Section 401.8 of the Monroeville Zoning Ordinance Number 1443 as amended to permit a cut-and-fill operation totaling 12,000 cubic yards. The project area is approximately one acre and located at 1451 Abers Creek Road, tax parcel 1108B173, in the R2-1 Family Residential and S Conservancy Zoning Districts.
Thank you, Paul. Is the applicant present? Please come forward. Sign in, please.
I have.
You have?
And one other point, the project was tabled at the last meeting.
Ah, okay.
Removed from the table.
And I'll entertain a motion to untable 21-5-St. and 21-3-C.
A motion to untable both?
My second. All right. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Steven Victor from Victor Wetzel Associates. I'm here tonight also with Haru Patel. He is in charge of the Building Committee for the temple.
Is he going to speak this evening?
He is not.
Oh, okay.
Unless you have a specific question that I can't answer, but I'm going to try to carry the load.
Good enough.
A few months back, my business partner, Mike Wetzel, was here and made the presentation to you. I've got a little PowerPoint here. A lot of it probably will be just sort of refreshing your memory. Not really much has changed in the plan since you saw it last, but I'm going to cover enough so that anybody who didn't catch it a couple of months ago will know and be up to speed with what we're doing. And basically, what we've been doing the last couple of months is just working through the engineering details of basically stormwater erosion and sedimentation control. The temple owns approximately 22.76 acres of property along Abers Creek Road and along Northern Pike. Its property is in both the S zoning district and the R2 zoning district. The R2 zoning district, the bottom of the property is the yellow area, and that's the area where the temple will occur. The entire site here, again showing the 22 and 3/4 acre site outlined in red, you can see Abers Creek Road running from north to south at the top of the sheet and Northern Pike off to on the left. The existing temple is located here, that's the blue shaded building right there. Access to it comes off of Abers Creek Road with the driveway up into the parking lot area. On the subject property is also the priest's residence located here, and it's accessed by a gravel driveway to come up to here. A few years back, there was an approval granted for constructing a much larger temple out here on the northern end of the site, if you recall that. That never came forth, and instead, a much more downsized, downscaled building is being proposed. These are pictures of the existing temple as they're viewed from the parking lot and from the hillside there. This is a rendering by the architect for the proposed temple. The building itself is only 72 feet by 72 feet in size. I made the comment the other day, this building looks like it could be huge, but it really isn't. It's only slightly larger than the existing building that's there.
What's the square footage of that?
72 times 72 in my head's about 4,900 square feet per floor, and there'll be two floors. On the upper level, which you can see the stair tower in the front there takes you up, and that would be the primary, I'll call it the secular, you know, the area for worship. Down in the lower level would be sort of common area where there would be a kitchen and a gathering area in that portion of it. The two areas are interconnected by an elevator, so we have full ADA access within the building. And the access on the left side of the building here is a ramp down to the lower level for ADA access, and on the right-hand side, there is another ramp that rises up to the upper level. So, both have ADA access to the two levels of the temple building. If we were to look, zoom into the site and look at an aerial photograph, again here, and highlighted in blue is the existing temple, the parking lot, the access driveway coming off of Abers Creek Road, and the priest's residence at the top of the hill. And just looking at the topography of the site, it's this area off to the left of the existing temple that where the proposed building would be located. And that is what is envisioned, is that a new building. And again, if you were to compare the size, if you look back at the old one and the new temple, it's just slightly larger for that. Therefore, there's not an anticipation that this is going to grow with the number of people who will be attending the services, therefore, the existing parking lot will adequately serve the needs of the temple.
It does meet the requirements of the ordinance, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, the concept would be to grade into the hillside. It was a hillside that had been previously cut away, and so, we're just going to dig that much further into it. And that was one of the things, engineering issues, that we've been looking at in the last couple of months, and that we had geotechnical exploration and came back with a recommendation on the stability of the slope and the steepness of the slope. The slope behind the temple here, off to my left here, is a 2.5 to 1 slope. Normal construction would be 2 to 1, so it's slightly flatter than what you would find in normal construction, and that was the recommendation from the Geotech based on the boring conditions that were found. The landscaping of the plan is basically taking and doing some ornamental planting around the front of the building and off to the side. And then, where the existing temple is located today, that area will be cleared off and leveled out, and a lawn area would be available there for, you know, any outdoor gatherings. And landscaping would be placed around it to sort of frame in that area. To the back of the temple, on the steep sloped area, we would be planting 50 new trees on that area to initiate a reforestation of that area. You know, in western Pennsylvania, you leave any piece of ground vacant, it will turn to forest. However, I think I lost my slide. Let me see if I can get it back. Let it show set up. Oops, don't want to do that. Cancel. We'll just, we'll leave it in this mode. It's not as nice, but I know how to get to...
That's okay.
Oh, from current slide. Here we go. Maybe this is it. Yeah, can't get me back. There we go. Okay, keep my fingers off the pad. One of the things that we also have is an underground detention tank. That tank will be located underneath the area of the lawn area here, the yellow-green area. There really is not much opportunity for stormwater for an above-ground facility, and so, we're using an underground tank facility to be located there. The sequencing of this is that we'll begin the basic construction and grading of the site. Then, the building would come up and out of the ground, and that runoff from the building would be directed into the existing storm sewer, and then from there, they finish the building, then the religious articles within the existing temple will be moved to the new temple, and then at that time, the existing temple can be removed, and then the stormwater detention tanks can go in there. So, all those things are part of the erosion and sedimentation control sequencing as submitted to the municipality.
And has been approved.
Yes. Yes. So, would there be any questions, any items I may have skipped over?
I personally don't have any. Anybody on the board have any questions?
I have one. I'm not as familiar with these as... It could be this permanent deflector.
Interceptor channel?
For water deflector.
I think you're talking about the interceptor channel.
Oh, there's a channel? Sure.
Interceptor.
Sure.
What does that consist of?
And we want to go back. There we go. I'm sorry?
What does it consist of? Is it...
It's a...
Is it a trough? Is it a wall?
It's... No, it's a cut channel, so it's like a more of a U shape, it's not a V-shaped, U-shaped channel. It's backfilled with large rock to control the erosion within that. The reason for that is that there is a significant hillside above the property, so there's that water. So, what we're doing is we're taking that water and diverting it around the temple, and it goes in two directions. From the high point here, it diverts and goes into an existing storm sewer system, and then on the other side, it comes back down around and again goes into the existing storm sewer system down here. So, again, it's the water that's been coming and will continue to come from above us, and we divert it out and around us.
Any other questions for the applicant?
You want to go into your next...
Sure.
...presentation?
Okay. That's a few. I'm a Mac person, so when I get around PCs, it's a little scary. Well, we are requesting two conditional use items. First, the municipality has a regulation that if you are cutting more than 10,000 cubic yards, whether it be 10,500 or 1,500, we still have to apply for a conditional use, in our particular case, 12,000 cubic yards. And the second one has to do with requesting that no sidewalks be constructed for physical reasons along Abers Creek Road. So, again, the location of our site, the frontage that we have along Abers Creek Road is 1,315 feet of frontage, and the excavation taking place down here in the area of where the proposed temple would be when we cut out that hillside is 12,000 cubic yards. The, again, the plan here shows where that grading would take place, at the rear of the building, right there. So, and as part of the application, we have submitted a geotechnical report that included borings specifically at the site of this, so we had excellent knowledge as to what the parent materials were for that site. And the, our geotechnical engineer and your reviewing geotechnical engineer believe that this would be safe to do at the 2.5 to 1 grading.
Okay.
Along Abers Creek Road, you can see, I've taken an aerial photograph, and in a black line represented the Abers Creek Road, and here, a little offshoot is the driveway going up to the temple. And I've provided a series of four photographs along Abers Creek Road. The first here, photo number one, is taken just before the driveway. In fact, you can see the driveway veering off to the left here. You can see that on Abers Creek Road, our side, how immediately from the edge of the pavement, the ground rises up at probably a near 1 to 1 slope area. So, be difficult, if not impossible, there. The second slide, it takes us just past the driveway, and again, we can see how the natural grades are rising steeply on the left side where the sidewalk would have been located on our side of the road. Continuing north on Abers Creek Road, we again see that continuation of the steep slopes, and then lastly, at the fourth slide, just a few hundred feet away from the Northern Pike intersection, again, the hillside continues to be steep and impossible. There are no other sidewalks within the immediate area, so it's not like by not putting it in, we've left a gap in any place. There's just not sidewalks in that area because of the physical characteristics along this whole area. So, that's the reason for our conditional use.
Understood. Would be very difficult.
Yes, sir.
Any questions of the applicant on 21-3-C?
Yeah, just one. I know prior, a few years back when you guys applied, there were some concerns about emergency traffic and anything like that accessing the site. Is that, has there been any kind of review in that regard for this current plan?
But that's one of the many discussions items that have taken place in the last couple of months.
Okay.
At the request of the municipality, we had submitted turning radiuses for both garbage trucks and, more importantly, fire trucks. And we show how a fire truck pathway can come up and into the site, can then be parked right in front of the building and can be fighting the fire there, and then exiting out. Your ordinance is very specific as to either a hammerhead turn or a circular cul-de-sac. We can physically accommodate the hammerhead approach, so we then have a diagram that's part of the application that shows how it can be backed up and going out. There also have been discussions regarding sprinklers within the building and the fire code, and basically, the discussion is when the architect submits the building requirements, he must show compliance as to why we do or do not meet the code requirement for sprinklers. I believe based on size, we're not required to, but size of the building, however, based on certain occupancies, we might be. And so, the resolution of that is really in the hands of the architect, and then going through the building permit review process for that public safety issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And no further questions for me. Any other questions from Board members? I will make a motion for 21-3-C and 21-5-St. to be approved. I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Paul?
Okay, under New Business, first item, 21-5-SUB, Kenneth Nason. Applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide tax parcel 639L66 and consolidate a portion of the subdivided property to parcel 639M108. Parcel 639L66 is currently 3.18 acres and will be reduced to 2.26 acres. A smaller subdivided piece will be added to parcel 639M108, creating Lot 14R. The properties involved are located at 2534 Monroeville Boulevard, the Dialysis Clinic, and the C2 Business Commercial Zoning District, and 162 Jamison Lane and the R2-1 Family Zoning District.
Thank you. The applicant is present?
Yes, Richard Tarett with Tarett Survey and Design.
All right. If you'll hold on for just a moment. Kim, you want to recuse yourself? Kim has a conflict, and she's going to recuse herself. Go right ahead, sir.
Oh, okay. I think Paul said the whole thing for me, so I guess the question is, there is no question. You know, obviously, there's, you have the Dialysis Clinic off of Monroeville Boulevard, and the backside of the property happens to be near Mr. Nason's property, which is he adjoins, so they have an agreement to purchase 7 tenths of an acre from the Dialysis Clinic. Before, currently, he does lease the property currently, right now, to use the property. He's been doing it for years. So, now it's come to the time where they want to just buy it, because the Dialysis Clinic doesn't want to continue leasing, so they give him the option to buy. So, he's going to buy it, so they'll attach to his property. There's nothing on the property except this is sore line, I mean, for drains, but outside that, you can't build on it because it's already part of his property, so it kind of like makes it restrictive in that respect. And it's all Zone R2, so that's a good thing on itself, so I can't ask the game to tell you about it, except it's a vacant piece of property. And if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer.
There were some questions on the drain easement that is in there currently.
Yes.
That there's a lot of debris and stuff over that that needs to be cleaned up. Is somebody going to do that?
Mr. Nason said he would do that.
Okay.
You can just show that, and Jared, if you can zoom in on this section right here, this is the Dialysis Clinic.
Oh, yeah, right.
The underground tank, and that's the area of that swell emergency spillway.
Okay, that's...
So, he's agreed to clean up the tires and pallets and...
Whatever happens to be, I was there myself, and I didn't see tires and pallets.
Well, there's two large tires, I think he uses there for like exercising or flipping their stuff.
Maybe it's something like that, maybe.
We were more concerned about the logs, the trees that have been cut and piled up.
Right.
We got to keep that swell, that emergency spillway open so that it doesn't divert water the wrong direction.
That's reasonable. Yeah, it's no problem.
And you say he has agreed to take care of that?
Yeah, there's no problem doing that.
He's here?
He's here to the law.
Okay. How you doing?
Good.
So, he has no problem doing that.
Good.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, on the utility easement, the sewer line, I understand you cannot build on that. Does everybody on your end understand that?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Because that's still owned by the Dialysis Clinic, that's their sore line. It's not his sore line, it's the Dialysis Clinic's sore line, so, yeah, he can't build on top of it.
And that was the purpose of the easement on the recorded plan?
Exactly. Right. Exactly. It's privately owned by the Dialysis Clinic.
Any other questions of the applicant from the board?
I'm on this time.
Anyone in the audience care to speak on this issue? Please come forward.
Okay.
And sign in, please.
Sorry. Let me sign earlier than you.
State your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Kim Kripke, and I'm a resident on Jamison Lane, and my property is adjacent to this proposed subdivision, and I have a few questions and a few concerns that have been developing over the years. I know that they provided a good deal of, if I put this down, will they be able to pick it up?
Yeah, just put it in the center and give Jared a second to zoom in on it.
Okay, so, well, we're talking about debris that has been building up over several years back there, tires and pallets and trees being taken down and not replaced. I understand that the owner of the property has a lease agreement with DCI, and in that lease agreement, it states that this space is designated a green space, and there's to be, when trees come down, they're supposed to replant them. When stuff is removed, or if there's a tree that falls down, when it comes down, you're supposed to replant another tree. And it's listed clearly in the lease agreement because DCI provided me a copy of the lease agreement. Now, DCI has not been a very good neighbor over the years. That retention pond or detention pond, that the swell, there's two separate, there's an underground and an above-ground swell. The above-ground swell is completely covered, and the cleanouts are barely visible. The drain against the property that is the next door, let's say there's, it's right next door to Mr. Nason's property, that drain is filled with mud, so it's non-functional. So, to say that that detention pond or retention pond is functioning properly is a gross exaggeration. The water is going somewhere, usually saturating the ground back there. It used to run years ago, you could hear it running through that drain. Every time there was a big rainfall, you could hear it flowing, you could go over there and see it flowing. It's full of mud. It's been like that for years. That comes from removing trees and not replacing anything and never doing any grading and just piling up. The water just redirects itself as, with every rainfall that happens. Now, my property, I have like nurtured some, you know, bushes and I replant trees. If I've taken a tree down, I replant trees on my own property. I have a string of Versitya and, you know, things that are aesthetically, you know, beneficial to the area because we always considered it a green space back there. Now, also, as many times as I have contacted DCI to do something about that, they always say it's functioning. Well, they're not, they don't live there, so they don't see it. And they are in the business of healthcare, so it's a dialysis clinic, that's not, they said they had an engineer go out there and look at it, and it was functioning, but it hasn't functioned in years, or those drains would be running freely. The neighbor who lives, he had to dig out the pipe, and it didn't do any good. They still have quite a bit of water that builds up in their yard. Now, this debris, and this is not like clippings from hedges, this is tons of garbage and, well, you know, pieces of logs, and when logs come down, you may have had somebody cut them up, the trees come down, but then they just bulldoze them into a big pile. And it's been, it used to be a very green area back there. And it was years ago, our neighbors, when we first moved there, 23 years ago, they told us that it was designated a buffer zone between the highway, when that development was established, that was a buffer zone between the highway and the development. And it was even, you know, it was, we had neighbors that said you can't go back there, the kids couldn't go back there and play, but they do, you know, it was not that restrictive, but you weren't allowed to really tear it up back there. Over the last five years, it's become quite an eyesore for a lot of people, and the one neighbor can't be here today because they're unavailable, but they're out of town. But there are a couple neighbors here that appreciate that and have been in the neighborhood for a while. I'm just... I'm just, I would like to see, I'm not against anybody purchasing property and keeping it, you know, more natural, the way it was designated to be. I mean, we have a lot of animals back there. We have falcons. The paragon falcon has a nest back there, and every year, there's new, I mean, there's a lot of deer, tons of deer. And the water, that water provides, that retention pond provides water for those. It's kind of like a wetland area to me. Now, I would like to see DCI responsible for that removal of all of that debris that Mr. Nason is going to purchase. Even though he has a lease agreement with them, they should be the ones responsible for that. They've never been responsible for that property. They've just let it, you know, no matter how many times you let them know that there's water issues, they just ignore you, so...
The gentleman just stated on the record that they're going to clean that up.
Wait, go ahead.
The gentleman just stated on the record that they're going to clean that up.
But before, prior to approving this subdivision, that should be done because I've seen the promises made, and it's never been cleaned up.
But it's not been part of the...
I mean, by DCI...
It's not been part of a record.
Pardon me?
It's not been part of a record like it is right now. It's on record to be cleaned up.
Is there a time limit that that has to be done?
We have not set one at this point. That doesn't mean that we can't or we won't, but we have not.
And if that doesn't happen?
Then the municipality will make, the municipality will then have to do it and charge them for doing it. It has to be cleaned up per what's going on right here.
And who is going to be responsible for that? Because I'm not understanding how the retention pond's going to belong or responsibility of DCI, and the property's going to belong to somebody else. How does that happen? I know when insurance has to step in for anything, say a tree falls and it lands on my shed or somebody's fence, and that tree has to be removed. Who's responsible for doing that on that property? Are they responsible for water damage from that retention pond if it doesn't function? Or is DCI responsible for that water damage?
I don't know the answer to that, but...
Well, those are questions that need to be answered. There's residents that are facing certain situations there because of that.
If the underground system would fail, it would be DCI's responsibility.
That thing has not worked for, I mean, it's very, you may say it looks functional by examining it, but I know how the water used to run there, and it used to run through that drain. And that swale is completely covered over behind the trees that are at the back of our yard that are on the DCI property. There has never been an ounce of water come through there in 15 years.
It's not supposed to. That's an emergency spillway, so that means it's working properly.
But it doesn't come out, it doesn't go through the drain either. The drain used to flow naturally. Like, when there was a big rain, you could be rest assured, you would go over there, and it would be running. It would run from there to the drain that's on the private property at the house there. It would run all the time, and they never really had that much of a water problem. Those drains are there for a reason. That property was always a wet area.
Okay, and you know, some of that has been rebuilt by the residents down there. That entire system is private.
Pardon me?
That entire system is a private system. Just move this.
Sure.
Can you zoom in on it, Jared? Can you get, can you go tighter? This one is our, this is our GIS map that shows the underground utilities, and it has them color-coded. So the light blue lines are private stormwater systems owned by DCI and these three residents. So all these blue lines are private stormlines owned by other people than the municipality. The underground system is in this area, and that's the inlet in question. And the emergency spillway goes this direction.
Mm-hmm.
This, is it this guy or that guy?
Yeah, this is where the drain is that is non-functional.
Yeah, but who did, who replaced the pipe?
The owner. Yeah, he tried to fix it because it was so swampy back there, and he didn't have, and nobody, there was an issue when he bought the house. They never said that there was water problems with the property, and there was.
Okay, so myself and our engineering inspector went to the site and looked at this inlet. It is a very shallow inlet, but it does appear to be functioning. We didn't see any signs of overflowing or erosion around it. And when we talked to Ken's wife, she told me that there was a lot of work done down there. The yard used to be wet, but since that work has been completed, those yards have since dried up. So from...
This yard is not completely dry. He has problems with water all the time there. But that's going to be just my word against somebody else's word, but I know for a fact it is.
Well, from our field investigation, which was only one day last week, everything appeared to be fine. So, I mean, we can continue to monitor it, and this is...
You should. The next time there's a large rainfall, like coming up in the next couple of days, somebody should go, needs to go there and see the water then.
We can absolutely do that. And the area of the downed trees and logs is approximately in here. And this is where Mr. Nason has agreed to remove that debris, so...
And when's that going to happen? Do we know when that's, do we give him like a specific amount of time?
We can do that in the conditions of approval. And we can, you know, coordinate, you think you can have a month, two months?
Well, I mean, winter's coming. I'll work on some of the logs. I mean...
If you want to talk, you have to come up to a meeting.
I'd be glad to. If I'm okay to come up now?
Sure.
Okay.
You have to sign in, Ken.
Certainly do that.
And state your name for the record, please.
My name is Kenneth Nason. My glasses on, so... I just wanted to clear up a few things that were mentioned that aren't necessarily quite correct. One, I began leasing the space back in 2018 for use. In regards to cutting down and/or planting trees, any conversations I've ever had with DCI was that in general, I wasn't to be cutting down any major big trees. Nothing about replanting trees or stuff like that. I was just using the property. I put it under my insurance for the purpose that they, due to an issue of a tree falling and smashing someone's shed, got into a battle and had done a survey and found that we, along with some other people, were on their property and had stuff on their property. They had sent a letter. I had responded to the letter. I had tried to initially buy it. They wanted too much money. He came back after that conversation, decided, he said, hey, I can lease you the property. Just put it under your insurance. That way, if somebody gets injured on it, that way it hits you first, not us. I must say, great. Do I use it as a workout space? I did it a period of time. I had a couple big truck tires out there, flipping tires on it. I think you're aware of the Spartan races I used to do. This past year, other than, as for debris back there, we haven't touched or done anything to the entire property, basically, anywhere back there, other than directly right behind our house. That's where we were working out. I built a seven-foot wall. I had a rope climb, things like that. This past summer, we had this two series of bad storms. Two major gigantic locust trees fell. One hit my fence and trampoline. My insurance covered that. And the other one, no, that's, I'm sorry, that one fell, and it's just laying there. And it was, fell where it is. The other one fell, hit my fence, trampoline, my neighbor's fence, and hit the swimming pool. So our insurance has covered those. Had those trees, that tree, removed. My next-door neighbor, Brody and Brandy, were concerned about a set of like sumac trees that had grown up right behind their fence. And Brandy had said to me, can you just have, the guy's name's Rex, can you just have him cut those out? I said, that's fine. Let's take that right out on the fence while he's out here. And that way, you know, it's done and gone with, and I don't have to worry about anything else falling over and hitting your fence. On the second round, when he came and cut that down, at the time, he threw it right back and right behind, kind of like where you guys are talking about, where that drainage line runs. I'll gladly clean it up. I mean, it's been sitting back there. I work every day, all day. I'm part of the Dairy Queen down here in Monrova. So with COVID and everything else, I've been working 60, 70 hours a week. I've lived at this location my entire life, and it's 1971. Five-year period when I was not there, when I first got married. Bought the house from my parents. This used to be woods all the way up to the top of the street. When I was little, we actually had flooding in our backyard. Can't remember exactly how long ago it was. George Dale was the councilman at the time. Mark Dale got the contract. He's the one that leveled that all out back there, built up the watershed wall, kind of pressed up the dirt and everything, and they did all that back then. Mrs. Mays used to live next to me. She's the one that gave them approval to go put that drain in and come down through her backyard because that would have made it the easiest route. So that was all done. Never have had another water problem since. As all the maps show, none of the water from that property is traveling to her property. As for cleaning it up, I'll gladly clean it up. In regards to what I do with the property at some point in time, whether I want to have grass there, and I'm planning, I'm probably fencing it in with a split rail fence. You know, other people have dumped stuff back there, and it's not even right behind my house. I have found concrete, big slabs of concrete over behind your house. There's two tires over behind your house. I didn't put them there. If you go up and there's grass and everything else piled up over there. If you go up to near the top of that property, somebody, because I had a yellow, or a couple stakes and some yellow twine rope or whatever, just so I knew what I was insuring at the time, and we kind of drew it out. Somebody recently just cut down a bunch of stuff and threw it all over top of that and into their property. There's concrete pieces up there from somebody's driveway. So people have dumped stuff on that property way before I ever leased anything or did anything with that property. As for changing anything with the property or having done anything to the property, I mean, the part about brushing things like that, I think is kind of funny. The one day you came out and confronted me when I went out and I looked at, I was putting up the rope, and you came over to talk to me, and you said, don't you're not allowed to touch anything here. Just leave things grow the way they grow, and if something falls, just leave it there. You actually said that to me.
I didn't say that to you.
You certainly did.
No, I did not. I asked you what you were doing.
And I said, I was roping off the property, and you said, I can't do anything back here.
But you didn't, you didn't contract the bulldozer.
What bulldozer?
Brody, was that? Because he told me. You, he got the bulldozer to fix his property, to fix that drain because, pardon me?
He hit the drain.
No, he, his yard was filling up with water, and they didn't know. They wouldn't have won a case, wait a minute, Ken, they wouldn't have won a case with the, at the magistrate's office to be paid for all of the work. He had to put a French drain in his property because there was so much water there coming from that area. He had to do that.
But that had nothing to do with anything I ever did.
But, listen, the more trees, the more vegetation you take out, you cleared, when you cleared your property, before you even knew, before you even, you cleared it and fenced off a huge area that wasn't yours.
Twenty some years ago.
No, well, maybe 15 years ago.
Yeah, 20 years ago. No, I bought the property in 2001.
But, okay, that being said, the trees that you have taken down, when you take vegetation out...
I didn't take any trees down.
You never took a tree down there.
I've never taken a tree down, no.
You've never cut a tree down?
I took my pine trees down on the back of my hillside when I bought it in 2000.
You never, and so how are all those big piles of trees laid? There's cut-up trees. You haven't stacked for...
Four years ago, a big tree, I have pictures of it. Four years ago, a big tree from back there fell down over top of my fence, right into the backyard flat area that I have. We cut it up, put in the logs or whatever, and we stacked it up there.
Does this look like, okay, Ken, does this look like that it's...
I have pictures of all the trees.
Does it, does this look like it's properly kept up? Would you want to live, does this, are you okay with this?
First of all, I didn't put those pallets there.
Who did?
Brody.
Why are they on your property? It's your, you're leasing the property.
Okay, but there's several people that have thrown a bunch of stuff on that property all the time.
And those tires aren't yours.
The tires of mine, I went and got those tires for my workout stuff. They're big giant truck tires.
And this is, and how about your boat?
My boat's in my driveway.
But it's, you know, the ordinance says you can't have anything like that. It's a mosquito infestation, just like your pool was for seven years. You left it sit without...
Because I couldn't afford to go there.
Okay, we're not going to do this.
So, I mean, first of all, I have begun to fix up all of my stuff. This entire year, I began fixing up all of my stuff. So if, I mean, if you want to go about the last seven years where I worked three jobs and couldn't afford to do any of that stuff because I lost my business, go for it.
This doesn't require brain surgery, Ken.
First of all, some of this stuff...
Responsibility, that's all.
First of all, some of this stuff was not put on my property. Second of all, once I buy the property, the thing is, is it's now going to be my backyard. I'm going to fix it up like I have the rest of my stuff. Cleaned up, fixed up, and I don't come over to your house and tell you how to...
As leasing the property, it does state in the lease that it should be, if there's anything trimmed. I mean, if you didn't read the lease, I did.
No, I read the lease.
And it designates, it says that you haven't done that. This is not an example of somebody who cares about property.
Well, the funny part is, if my wife is here, like I said, we had the conversation about even removing any brushing. You told me it's a wildlife preserve, and we're not allowed to touch anything.
Well, it is.
It's not a wildlife preserve. It's a private piece of property I'm purchasing and adding to my backyard. I'm going to fix it up like my backyard and clean it all up. I have already made mention of it. We've talked about it. We'll split rail fence it in, probably clean up some of the trees out of there. We're going to plant grass. We're going to make it nice. Part of it, we're going to leave woods.
Can I interject for a minute? Mr. Weldon, based on your visual inspection and everything, you said the existing stormwater system that's private appears to be in working condition. If some of the debris is removed off the property so that water flows naturally like it was occurred, you feel that would make some difference or any difference? You know, is that something that could be beneficial to the system? Okay, Mr. Nason, you've agreed to remove the debris off the property?
I mean, yeah, I mean...
Well, when you had, can I ask, when you had the trees cut down, when you had the trees cut up that fell, why did he just, why did he just bulldoze them? Rex would have carried them out of there.
I wasn't even there when Rex did it. I was at work. Rex came and, Rex knows you.
I know that. I've not ever been to you.
He actually asked you about going through your yard.
Excuse me again, please.
I don't want to get into a big battle about it.
Stop, stop, okay? I don't need this back and forth stuff. We need facts. We don't need you two talking 15 years ago.
All I, listen, all I'm interested in is DCI being responsible to make that retention pond and clean those, that line out to make the water travel the way it's supposed to travel. You can't do it with all that crap in there.
My question to you is, what does that have to do with us approving this subdivision?
Well, I'm a resident here in Monrova, okay?
I understand that.
And I'm just as important as he is. And I know, I don't begrudge him purchasing property. God bless him if he wants to do that. It's what I have experienced over the years. And if it's only going to get worse, what is, why should I say, oh, sure, go right ahead? That's just great. It's not, it was never, that's not the way it's been.
What makes you think it's going to get worse?
It's gotten worse over the years.
He's just agreed to clean it up. What else do you want him to do?
All right.
What else do you want him to do?
Okay, that's fine. And the municipality has a responsibility to make DCI responsible to maintain that detention pond. It's the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection mandates that every municipality do that. And they have never done that. Nobody has ever, I could talk to 10 people at DCI, and I've talked to some of the top people down in Tennessee, and nobody has ever approached them to say, you need, this needs to be taken care of.
Okay, then what your complaint is, is with Monrova, not with this gentleman.
Well, no, it's with DCI, and I worship, where else, it's, I think, before, it should be, he's going to walk into something, what if, what if he has, what if a large rain comes? If people's property gets flooded again, or trees come down again? Is he responsible for cleaning up those trees? Is your insurance going to pay for that? If it falls on somebody else's property?
First of all, according to insurance and property, my understanding from talking to all the insurance companies, that if a tree is live, if a tree falls and it's live, then each individual's property, property owner is, their insurance is responsible for their stuff. If it was a dead tree and I did not take care of it, then I would be liable.
There's a lot of dead trees back there.
Well, I'm going to clean it up. I'm going to turn that into my backyard. I'm just expanding the amount of land that I have to attach to my property and my house.
But you're not responsible for the detention pond or retention pond, or their lines?
Their sewer. That sewer, that maintenance sewer that's all the way over in... Their sewer, that sewer, that main sewer that's all the way over in the field is their sewer. And, you know, I have to give them an easement, that if they need to come through, they can come through and do whatever they need to do with that sewer, but other than that, I own the, I'll own the property, and that property will become part of my yard. I'm just going to clean it up to make it part of my yard. And hopefully keep everybody else from dumping stuff on it. I mean, a lot of people have done that in the last six months apparently, so.
I, I have, I only put grass on my own property, we, we take our, take care of the back of the yard. So.
Thank you, Ken.
You're very welcome.
Kim, anything else?
Pardon me?
Anything else?
No, I'm sure there's other people that have something to say, though, maybe.
Anyone else in the audience, please come forward. Sign that document, please, and state your name for the record.
My name's Janet De Secco, I live at one fifty-three Jamison Lane. And I've lived there for thirty years. And I also have a, uh, water problem, and I don't know where the water's coming from. But, um, over the last, um, number of years, there's, um, an, an increased amount of water that comes into my yard, and it comes across Jamison Lane from, um, I don't know whether it's DCI, or, it's just that area. And the water flows underneath Jamison Lane. And you can see that the, the road is always wet, and it's cracking, and the water then comes in between my house and my neighbor's house. And now it's to the point where, um, it's hard for the grass cutters to mow the lawn because there's, there's just so much water. And it, it's a muddy area. And I know, Paul, that you had looked at that, and, uh, I don't know whether you noticed that the water was.
I'm trying, I just, I'm, uh, trying to find your property.
I'm across the street from. I'm on, I'm on this side of the street.
Okay, so this is, this is Kim's house.
And I'm here.
Okay.
And the water that I have comes this way, and in between my house and my neighbor's house.
Okay, we, we did, we did look at that.
Okay.
Uh, and when we first started, we thought maybe it was coming from the DCI property, but there is actually a high point in here. So all of this DCI water gets directed here. The water that's coming in this direction is coming from these yards, it's coming from up here.
Okay.
And if you look at some of these photographs, it might help. Okay, this is. So this is the back of the DCI property. Ms. Kribda's house is over here, you're on the other side of that. So you can sort of see, there's, there's like a low spot on the DCI property that goes back to that inlet, and then it starts to go back uphill. So all of this water from DCI does not get to Ms. Kribda's backyard or across Jamison.
Okay.
Uh, this is Mr. Nason's backyard. This is the debris Mr. Nason has agreed to remove, I thought I had a picture looking up the hill, maybe I don't.
Are you saying that you think the water is coming from maybe?
Yep.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay.
When the inspector and I were out there, just waiting for that to come back up on the screen there, so other people can see what we're talking about, we stood back here by Ms. Kribda's shed.
Okay.
And you can clearly see this, this large lawn area is funneling water right towards your house, right towards your homes.
Um, do you, did you notice if there was a drain here?
Then, I did not walk on their property, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, no, if it was a big enough drain, it would show up on our GIS map like these, so if there is a drain, it might be like a roof drain from their downspouts or something, but I did not notice any, any pipes or inlets.
Okay, it, is there anything to be done about this? The amount of water that's coming?
Uh, we unfortunately have multiple situations like this in the municipality, and it's a private property issue. Uh, you know, water flows down hill, and unfortunately, you're at a lower spot. Uh, so, uh, you know, you can contact your neighbors and see about maybe installing some swales to, to direct water towards some, uh, public inlets. Uh, but as far as, as far as the municipality is concerned, it's a, a private property issue between residents.
Oh, okay, so that would be the resident who had, who has to fix the problem?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All righty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have anything? Not seeing anyone. Our task is the planning commission with twenty-one B S U B, is basically to approve or disapprove the preliminary and final subdivision of these parcels. That doesn't change any of the water flow, it doesn't change anything else. All it does is approve a subdivision. That, that's what our responsibility is here. It's not to fix water, it's not to plant trees, it's not to cut trees. It's basically just to either approve or disapprove the final and preliminary subdivision. That's what our responsibility is. Not seeing anyone else in the audience with anything to say, board members, anything from you? Not hearing anything. I'll entertain a motion on twenty-one dash five dash S U B.
I will motion to approve twenty-one dash five dash S U B.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. You're welcome. Paul?
Thank you. Next item?
Uh, we just combine the two?
Yes, uh, so, uh, items two and three are the same applicant, one is a conditional use, one is a site plan. Hutton Monrova Old Abors P A S T L L C. Applicant requests conditional use approval pursuant to section four oh one of the, of the Monroeville zoning order number fourteen forty-three as amended to construct a car wash. The property is located at seventeen sixty-one Golden Mile Highway and known as tax parcel ID one two four two N one three zero in the C two business commercial zoning district. Item three is the site plan, twenty-one dash seven dash S T, Hutton Monrova Old Abors P A S T L L C. Applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct the car wash and associated site amenities. The property is located at seventeen sixty-one Golden Mile Highway and known as tax parcel ID one two four two N one three zero in the C two business commercial zoning district.
Applicants are present, please sign in and state your names for the record if you're going to speak.
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, my name is Matt Marshall, I'm with Dylan McCallens, Ken Calderon, Graham, and I am here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Hutton Monroeville Old Abors P A S T L L C. Uh, with me this evening, um, is Mr. Mark Zimmerman from Morris Knolls Engineering, um, who will be describing the existing site, uh, the proposed car wash development that we have this evening, uh, and the improvements associated therewith. Um, also with me this evening is Mr. Ben Carroll, uh, who is the development manager with Hutton, uh, who is available to answer any questions regarding the operation of the facilities at the site.
Okay.
Um, my client is the tentative, tentative developer and the holder of an agreement of sale to purchase the property from Four Seasons LLC, who's the owner of the existing piece of property here. Uh, the existing property, uh, is used as a RE/MAX, uh, real estate office. Uh, the property is located, um, at, um, one seventy, I'm sorry, sixteen, seventeen sixty-one Golden Mile Highway. Um, it abuts, um, two eight, Route two eighty-six Golden Mile Highway in, uh, in the front, and it also abuts Old Abors Creek Road in the rear. Um, my client is requesting approval this evening of, uh, conditional use and site plan approval for proposed, uh, development of a car wash at the, at the property. Uh, my client, uh, has constructed many of these types of car washes, it is a conveyor style car wash, and it's called Mod Wash Car Wash. Um, the property, um, uh, as indicated, is in a C two, uh, business commercial zoning district, vehicle services, uh, for which a car wash is, is a conditional use in the, in the C two district. And the properties, uh, are zoned to run it, are either C two or industrial, uh, on the either, uh, in the front and back. Um, so at this point in time, um, I would turn it over to Mr. Mark Zimmerman, um, who can, uh, from Morris Knolls Engineering, who can give you an overview of the site plan.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Mark Zimmerman with Morris Knolls and Associates, I'm the civil site engineer on this project. And I think if we could zoom in on the site plan, uh, what I'd like to do is just take you through the site plan, just kind of show you.
Put it more towards the center.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you, that'll be easier. Um, take you through the site plan, so you know how the, how you get in and out of, of this facility. So the entrance to the, the facility will be off, um, State Route two eighty-six Golden Mile Highway, and there is an access off Old Abors Creek Road. Um, if you come in off Golden Mile Highway, you have access to the four parking stalls, this will be the main entrance to the site. Uh, coming up here, you have the four parking stalls for the employees, and then you have two bug prep stations, um, parking stalls, these are self-service, they all have a, a wash bin there, you take the brush out, brush the front of your car, um, just to help get some of the bugs off before you go into the car wash. Once done with the bug prep, you can travel into the pay kios, there are three pay kios areas in the rear. There will be an employee station here to help facilitate travel through those pay kios. It is a cashless system to help facilitate quick movement through that area. There's also a VIP membership lane, uh, this is where you can buy a monthly membership. Um, and then you'll see license plate readers here, that if you have that monthly membership, it'll read your license plate, and it'll just allow you to go right through, really quick service in that area. Once through the pay kios, you can enter in the wash facility in this location. There will be an employee located here as well to help you line up to get on the conveyor, um, to help move quickly through the site. Once on the conveyor, you exit out on this side of the car wash, where you would turn right and come around to the vacuum stalls that are located here. Uh, these are free vacuums as part of your pay for the car wash. Um, vacuum booms on each side to help, uh, that way, a little easier to get in and out of your car and to get a, a good vacuum done. Once done with the vacuum, you would exit back out on State Route two eighty-six. There will also be, uh, an, I guess, a site manager located in this area to help review and, and look at the pay kios, and for general maintenance, uh, operations, if there's an issue with the vacuums, if there's an issue inside the car wash, there'll be somebody there to, to fix it and help, uh, maintain the site in all areas. And if, uh, there's also a sidewalk along the front, and a Penn dot H O P permit that is ongoing, so that is part of our, our review process. We have responded to comments from Paul and Stormwater, we've gotten those comments back, and, uh, we don't see any issues with meeting those outstanding comments as well. And at this time.
You, you want to discuss the approved variances?
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you. So we did get variances, um, for this site, there's basically buffer yard variances. If you're, I'm sure you're all familiar with Golden Mile Highway, what's built there is just a concrete asphalt jungle, uh, for lack of a better term. Um, so what we've been doing here is mimicking those, um, areas and trying to, um, make those areas a little bit better, in some areas, in, in most of those areas, we're able to do so. Especially the building, this building is well within the building setback, if, if you remember, the, the building that's there now is actually most of this back of the lot. Um, so we were able to get some zoning variances to help, um, help us build this in the way it looks and is presented here.
Oh, we, we had talked about a possible other exit coming out onto Abors Creek there?
Yeah, our traffic engineer looked at that, and I discussed it with the applicant about putting a brake in the concrete island as you exit the car wash, so that you can more easily make a left to, uh, arrive at Old Abors Creek Road. So if you, can you point that out real quick?
Oh, yes, yes, so, um, in talking to Paul, there was a discussion about having a, kind of a cut in this curb line here to exit out on Old Wars, Old Abors Creek Road.
Right.
Um, that's something we can look at more in, more in depth and provide some feedback and possibly plan revision for that. I know there is a concern if you're waiting here, and sorry, I didn't know this at the time, that cars will be coming behind you, and if there are cars coming up this way, you're stopped here, and now you have to shut the car wash down. Wouldn't like to see that, obviously, but it, it's a possibility and something that Mod Wash just wants to review, s- safety concern in that regard. Um, but it's not to say that we, we can't put it in.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, something certainly we'll look at. Um, but I just, in general, the, the, the general safety design of this is, don't give them, don't give the people that immediately exit options, because we don't want the other car hitting them from behind.
If someone doesn't want to vacuum.
Yes.
That would be an easy exit for them, not having to go through that.
And I, I should note, there's a, there's an exit here that if they don't want to vacuum, they can just go straight out to.
You, you, you were talking about the backup, you might still run into that situation, uh, you know, if two or three cars get backed up waiting to exit on the two eighty-six, you might still end up with, uh, with a backup situation there, so you might want to think about putting some laser detectors in or something, you know, if a car stopped, you know, the, the car wash slows down, or, you know, stops forward progression or something.
Yeah, if people want to make a left when they leave, that could stall things.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that was a, a question I had, was, was there any turn restrictions, either coming out of the property on the Golden Mile Highway, or are you able to make a left into the property off of Golden Mile?
There are no turn restrictions, uh, now that's still going through Penn dot, but as of right now, there are no turn restrictions for this.
Anyone in the audience have any questions for the applicants? Not seeing any, board members, questions? No further questions? I'll entertain a motion for twenty-one dash six dash C and twenty-one dash seven dash S T.
Motion to approve?
My second. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Paul, go.
Got to call them.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. You're good to go.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Ork's going to be upset.
Paul, do, do you need to read number four, can we just table that?
Uh, we can just table it, um, we just read into the minutes that the, item number four, the Manila Group has requested to table themselves until the December meeting.
And we have a letter that states that, so I'll entertain a motion to table twenty-one dash eight dash S T.
So a motion that we table?
Correct.
Second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. One last thing, if you'll indulge me, uh, I want to thank the camera crew for the job they do, uh, for all the public meetings, they do a great job, and I, I want to thank you. I want to thank Sharon and Paul for the job you guys have done to help us try to get this through.
Well, thank you.
Properly, and you do a great job at that. And the rest of this board, I, I appreciate you very much, uh, but this is going to be my last meeting. I have been elected to council, uh, and I start in January, so I'm taking December off uh, to try to get my head clear to what I'm stepping into. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye.